Okay, but should I not let people in until? Give me just a second. I'm gonna go ahead and turn off the audio on here. I'm just gonna make sure that everything is set.
Oh, I'm in. Yeah.
So you're in?
Oh my, oh, join the video.
Okay, I'm gonna take off, allow participants to unmute themselves. Okay, all right, I'm gonna mute them all. I have it set to people can't take themselves off mute and chat can only go to the host. Submit all.
This meeting is being recorded.
Oh my gosh.
Winifred on. I'm gonna unmute. Nope.
Good evening, everyone. You'll wait a moment or two as people are entering from the waiting room. I'm checking to see if board members are here. Jennifer's here. Stuart's here. Dan, I saw Dan a moment ago. Dan is here. Sam, are you here? Sam Gill? I want to make sure I'm heard by all. Someone raise their hand if they can hear me? Oh, okay, good. Thank you.
Do you want me to unmute the board members?
Yeah. Okay, good evening, everyone. It's the bewitching hour, 6 o'clock. This is a public hearing of the Village of Fleischmann's, May 24, 2021. And this is a public hearing for the purpose of reviewing the zoning, getting public input to the zoning law amendment and the state environmental quality review and comments from the public for the board's deliberation.
Join the meeting.
That's the purpose for this public hearing tonight. As you, most of you hopefully are aware, the zoning law amendment and the full environmental assessment form called the FEAF and the FEAF resolution which is being considered, that document provides the explanation of the impacts described in the FEAF. All those documents have been on the village website. Hopefully you've had a chance to review them. And we have given public notice for this meeting in the Mountain Eagle and the public was informed through its regular distribution channels. So as we proceed to public comments, I want to recognize that all individuals who are present may speak. I would like to call upon individuals as they raise their hand, but like you to announce your name and if you are a Fleischmann's voter, property owner or other, and whether you are in favor or opposed to the zoning law amendment. So as we proceed, I'd like individuals to provide comments for up to one and a half minutes. And again, after all others who wish to speak have done so, so that we can get input from all. I will, as we, so I will initially make a list of people who wish to speak and I will go through that list. And I may interrupt it. Should, I will recognize representatives of the Palace Hotel out of turn if they wish to provide some factual information regarding comments of prior speakers. As you probably are aware, trustees are not obligated to respond to the public comments presented tonight, but will use them in their deliberations. So before we move to comments, I would like to read the zoning law amendment. And that has been proposed. Or Stuart, do you want to, do you want to read it? Do you have it in front of you? Oh, Stuart, just a moment. You're not, you're muted. Can you unmute Stuart?
I would prefer that you present it. I don't, I don't have the material in front of me.
This is the introductory law, non-conforming hotels in residence zoning district. So the proposal is being enacted by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Fleischmann's, County of Delaware, State of New York as follows. Section 1. Section 100-51 titled "Nonconforming Buildings and Uses" of Chapter 100 titled "Zoning" is amended by adding a new subsection H to read as follows. Section H, "Nonconforming Hotels in Residence Zoning District." Any existing building in the residence zoning district that was designed, constructed, and operated as a hotel shall be allowed to operate as a lawful, nonconforming hotel use, even if hotel operations were suspended for any period of time after the use became nonconforming. Section 2, this law shall take effect immediately upon filing with the State Secretary of State, should it pass. Okay, so who would like to speak? Could you raise your hand and I will just take note to make sure we can capture all. So that is Chris Plant. And Steve Greenstein. Are there others who wish to make public comments? Anita Rubin. Bill Burns. Okay, I'll take that round first and then we can proceed with more comments. So Chris. So you'll unmute Chris? Oh Jenny, he's under Jenny.
There we go. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for giving me time to speak. I appreciate it. Just wanted to touch base on the pros on changing or modifying the zoning, nonconforming.
Excuse me, Chris, could you, your name and whether you're a voter, property owner or other?
Okay, so my name is Christopher Plant and I am other.
Okay.
I am a code enforcement officer in a different village and I've also been the code enforcement officer in Fleischmann's before Mr. Davis's reign. I'd just like to say that I am for the amendment of the zoning, the nonconforming use zoning. The pros on, on why to do it. These older buildings, as we see in a lot of villages and towns, they're nonconforming for a reason. There was no building codes or zoning at the time that these places were built. To make them conform with a new zoning law is almost impossible. The recommendation to go through any process is impossible for the, for any applicant to comply with zoning. So which means that they would have to give a variance for all these necessary things that, to comply with the zoning. So I don't understand the purpose of doing 100 variances to, to allow a nonconforming building to stay nonconforming and still not, you know, and still be nonconforming. So to, to change or to clarify the zoning amendment would be in the best interest of the village. It also just adds jobs. Everybody knows that I am pro-business. And for the village itself to get a vibrant street and Main Street, you want people parking on Main Street, you want people walking around. That's best for all businesses within the village. And, and I hope that the village board moves forward tonight with this amendment. That's all I got.
Thank you, Chris. Steve Greenstein. Welcome. Oh, oh, just a moment, Steve. You're, you're, we're on the he's still muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hello, everyone. I see a lot of familiar faces here. Hello, hello. I live on 29 Ellsworth Avenue, which is exactly right across from the Palace Hotel. So they are my neighbors and I don't know the exact details of all the legalities of what's going on. From what I understand, that this amendment would allow it to operate as a hotel, correct? Is that what it's saying?
Yes.
Just layman's terms that if this passes tonight, now is this just this one specific location or that would be for the entire Village of Fleischmann's?
Well, this is for public comment, so I'm not sure that this is part of the
Okay, well, I'm not, you know, I didn't know if it was just this particular location with now everything changed or the whole zoning for the entire village. Every hotel can now operate that wasn't a hotel. So my only concern is that if there's a lot of money being spent here now from the village coffers to fight any kind of lawsuits and things like that, that's very upsetting to me because I think the money could be spent right now improving streets and roads. I live on Ellsworth, which is directly across from the Palace. It's now May 20 something. And it looks like the bombing of Dresden, the, the road there. The potholes are gigantic. The, the turnoff onto my street across from the Palace Hotel is a huge sinkhole basically. And sending Corky there to do patchwork with a little thing and some tar over the last three years is not the answer. It really needs to be paid properly because it's really could damage your car. So it's unsafe. So I don't know how much money is being spent by the villagers to fight these, these things legally. I think if there is a lot of money being spent, it could be spent better areas. Me personally, I've seen the Palace when it was owned by this woman that was there. Since I've lived there, it has now changed over. I can only say that it's not particularly, you know, roaring out of behavior. I have noticed cars parked there that kind of bug me sometimes. I wish it'd be kept cleaner on the street there. Those are the only issues I've had. It hasn't been unruly in any way. But I wish it was just kept, maintained a little cleaner on the street level when it's being occupied. I guess it's as a hotel, which I've seen a lot of, you know, young people come and go in the summer months. It doesn't last very long. I think, you know, by Labor Day, whatever, it's all over and it's pretty sleepy place.
Any more points?
No, that's it. That's all I have to say. I just, you know, what, you know, I'm, I'm not a big village board meeting, I mean, member meetings, my first one I've attended. But since I'm so close to the property and discussion, I thought it was important that I would voice my opinion.
Thank you, Steve. Anita. Anita Rubin, please. Can you unmute on your side, Anita?
Okay, hi. My name is Anita Rubin. I've been a resident of the Village of Fleischmann's for more than 40 years. And we have discussed that this property, the Palace property ceased being a hotel more than 12 years ago and it falls into the nonconforming status of current Fleischmann's zoning laws, which were enacted to update the zoning in Fleischmann's in a comprehensive plan. And let's keep in mind that this property sits in a residential and historic district of Wagner Avenue. I believe the sole purpose of asking for the grandfathering of the Palace Hotel is to avoid the necessity of applying for special permits. And the sole purpose of that is to avoid any oversight, compliance, and adherence to local laws. I'd like to go back in history a little bit because the applicant has also cited investment and hardship as being one of the reasons that this should be grandfathered. Well, if we go back in history a little bit, we know that that argument was used by a different property owner who was a junkyard dealer and pressured the board to grant a junkyard permit on the Bailey property, which now is a totally green area. But it took many of us 20 years to rid Fleischmann's of five junkyards. The junkyard owner also threatened village board members and others with lawsuits. In fact, one evening at a village board hearing on the issue, a gentleman who left the hearing was accosted on Main Street and threatened with physical harm. He later sold his house and he was also threatened with a lawsuit of over a million dollars. Because of those two things, he sold his house and he left the village. Two other people I know who were threatened in different ways at that time sold their house on Wagner Avenue and up a Wagner Avenue. I was also threatened during that time. And very quickly, I'll tell you that a person who was associated with the junkyard dealer at that time blocked me in my car to prevent me from going forward across Main Street, the corner of Main Street and Bridge Street. I had a smaller car and I had the advantage because he had to turn around. I went around on the sidewalk to avoid him. I drove all the way up the Little Red Hill Road, very fearful that he would catch up with me. The bottom line was, I avoided him. I went to the Main Street in the village and I saw a car parked in front of someone's house, a truck. I knocked on the door. I knew that person. That person is on this video tonight. I saw that he is one of the people participating. I have a few more things to say. And he accompanied me home. No one was there to wait for me. I was concerned. Sometimes strong on track tactics work. And these incidents took place over 20 years ago, but I feel it's relevant today because history is about to repeat itself. Once again, we have an applicant who is used some of the same strong on tactics. This applicant previously threatened village residents who opposed his agenda. One incident widely viewed by many people was recorded on video and I think you all know what to, to what I am referring. A different resident was threatened and harassed by this individual and contacted the state police and the state police issued a order of protection for that woman against this particular applicant. Additionally, this applicant owns other properties in the village which have not been, in which he has not complied with the rules that were set for him. The Northland Hotel, the applicant had applied to build additional units. He was granted, I believe, I may be wrong in the number, but approximately 12 additional units. Instead, he built five or six more, perhaps a total of 17. Those units were also built in the flood zone too close to the stream. The village board at the time was also, didn't want to spend money, didn't want to be involved in a lawsuit. But what they should have done was ask that applicant, the same one who's applying tonight, to tear down the additional units that he built, which were illegal. That was not done and to date, those units stand. There were other problems at the Northland. One more moment, please, Winifred. One more moment. I'm gonna wrap this up. Lighting, which was supposed, not supposed to change, did change. The sewage system was installed before it was given approval. And then there was a question of how much the Fleischmann's sewage capacity would be. What I'm trying to say is that leopards don't change their spots. And I will also say, in the incidents that I spoke about before where people were threatened on the street, the people who threatened us had a strong association with that junkyard dealer. And those things, those people were proxies, proxies of that gentleman. He didn't do the dirty work himself, but they were proxies. And I believe because the village board was afraid of lawsuits and also because they were also threatened, that they did not pursue this. But that is not the way to go. One more moment. Leopards don't change their spots. And I don't believe that we have any reason to think that if this property is grandfathered in, that the applicant will follow any of the regulations of noise, parking, lighting, sewage, cooking in individual rooms, fire codes, refuse disposal, occupancy, capacity. All these things need to be scrutinized and have to be clearly watched. As I said in my earlier comments, village boards of the past overlooked and caved into pressures.
Anything further?
There may have been some impropriety involved in the people who were on those village boards. So I urge this board to please stand strong and not grant this property to be grandfathered in. There is a lot to be considered. Not only the, the rules, but also the past performance of this applicant. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Next, thank you for your comments. Bill Burns.
Hi, neighbors. My name is Bill Burns. I'm a full-time resident of Fleischmann's, formerly a member of the zoning board of appeals and for a while the chair of that body. The reason why we're here is because the zoning board of appeals voted in a very close, closest you can get, three to two vote, not to grant grandfather status to the hotel. So it's not as if there was a clear cut. You know, this was an interpretation where people on both sides could see reasons for why they were doing what they, what they did. I personally believe, I've worked with the zoning law for 13 years. I personally believe that the zoning law would allow, does allow, should allow the Palace Hotel to, to open. But again, the vote was three to two. Secondly, all five zoning board of appeals members, while expressing opposing views on the process for opening the Palace, all five enthusiastically and strongly committed themselves to, we want the Palace to open. I think, and by the way, I have faith and trust in all five of the members of our village board. And I'm asking you to support this amendment because I think it really is a creative and intelligent way to solve a difficult problem that the village faces. I want to point out that the interior of the Palace, if you haven't gotten a chance to see it, it's been renovated. It must have cost a million bucks and it's been renovated in such a way that that building is going to be standing for another 50 years in a, in a sort of elegance. The exterior, the historic exterior, as you can see, has remained the same as it was before. It's been maintained. Several village board members have
John Frankoviac.
Several
Join the meeting.
Excuse me. Several village board members have been told by the owners of the property have been shown a parking plan on site. The property owners have committed to no further installation, or no installation of any lighting other than the lighting was there under the previous proprietor. The Palace, by the way, is surrounded by several properties owned by the same owner. That might be pointed out. And as was pointed out by Mr. Greenstein, the owners have filed a lawsuit in the Supreme Court. The lawsuit is against both the village and the ZBA. And the word on the street is that the owners are planning a couple other lawsuits and one of them might in fact add to the names of defendants. I think it's going to put the village through a very difficult period of time as well as taxpayers who have to pay for the attorneys to defend that lawsuit. And elections have consequences. Every informed voter in the Village of Fleischmann's, I believe, should have known, if they did not, I'm sure they did, that the two candidates who were running for the village board, Sam Gill and Stuart Cohen, were running on a platform of, let's have a different approach. Let's have our government have a different approach to our summer neighbors and our summer guests. They won the election. They introduced what everyone expected them to introduce, something that was going to relieve this problem. And I want to point out that the owners of the Palace believe that their right to equal treatment under the law has been violated. Now, we don't have to agree. We don't have to say that, yes, they're right. They're, they're, they have their right to equal protection under the laws has been violated. We can disagree, but we do owe them listening to what they have to say. We've learned to listen to those in the Me Too movement. We've learned to listen to those in the BLM movement. We need to listen to people who are claiming constitutional infringement, even if we disagree that that prejudice and that discrimination is there. And finally, I want to point out as an amateur historian that Charles Fleischmann's came to Griffin Corners for one reason and one reason only. And that is, I'm glad I'm entertaining. And that is, I'm glad I'm entertaining, and that is that he was looking for a place where he and his community could come for a summer resort and not be turned away because all over the country, summer resorts in the 1880s hung up signs saying, you're not welcome. Our heritage in Fleischman's is welcome to Fleischman's. I urge the five members of the village board of appeals to adopt this creative and intelligent solution to a problem that faces our community right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. So we'll go for another round. Are there others who wish to speak in favor or in opposition to this amendment? See, we have Daniel Bezzol, Bezzol. And we have Keith. Can you, well, when we get to you, I'll get your last name. Anyone else? Okay. So we have Daniel, Bezzol, Keith, and then who else?
Hiram.
Hiram?
And Alex.
Alex.
And Zach.
And Zach.
And then Todd.
And Todd, Todd. Okay, let's take that in that order. So Daniel, Daniel Bezzol.
Hi, could I actually end up going last amongst these people just because I have to have some childcare obligations at the moment?
Okay, all right. So we'll move on to Keith. Keith. Keith, can you unmute yourself from your side? There we go.
There you are.
Okay, Keith, could you introduce yourself, please?
Sure, Winifred, I'm Keith O'Brien. I am a excuse me. Hi there. Good evening. And I'm, you know, I'm, I know little to nothing about the law and that's not why my phone, this, this conversation is, is, this meeting is happening. This meeting is happening because I am in support of Abraham and the Jewish community in Fleischman's. And as I believe Bill Burns did a, an outstanding presenting facts, a lot more of course than I do. I'm coming from a completely different point of view. My point of view is I own 1130 Main Street, which would be the tinderbox, my family and myself. And I've had the privilege of not only meeting Abraham and his family and many families for many years as they would pass my store, as I so often sit outside and just enjoy whoever goes by and wants to say hello or wants to communicate, maybe smile. So, and plus, their, their building is right next store to mine. And they not only have all those, and he's done such an incredible job in fixing that building up. That building was slated to be actually taken down. So that was actually, they restored this, kept this on the tax rolls. There, not only is there, there, they have beautiful rooms there, but they also have an incredible eatery there for takeout foods. Fantastic. But again, my friendship and totally personal here, again, I am not speaking from a, any law that I am not a professional with. I'm just coming as in, in support of him at the, at that, that palace that they so incredibly made so beautiful. I mean, they, as Bill had said, and he knows much more than I do about that, but they have really put a lot of money and time and love into this. And I would, you know, I, I don't see any reason why that should not be. But again, I'm coming from just this, just this little person here in Fleischman's that has a voice and I am putting it out there in, in complete support of Abraham.
Keith, and thank you for your comments. And now, Hiram. Welcome. And then we are unmuting you. So
Okay. I'm here.
Ron. So, welcome, Hiram.
Okay. The first thing I want to say is this isn't about a friendship of someone or something like that. As the code, and my name's Hiram Davis and I'm the code enforcement officer for the town of Middletown and the village of Fleischman's. It's not about, you know, being friends with somebody and them being able to do what they want or not. It's about what the zoning law says and those things. And I'll be very brief, but I'll address a couple of things that Mr. Burns have said. And number one, if they had done the extent of repairs on the palace that he claims, that means they have substantially improved that building and that building is in the floodway or floodplain, I mean. And that would be over a 50% improvement of the value of that building by far. And that would mean they'd have to to meet all of the FEMA laws and elevate that structure and do all kinds of things. If they've done that extent of repairs, they've done them illegally because I do not have permits that allow for that extent of repairs on that building. But I do want the board to realize that that building and that entire parcel is in the floodplain. And it does create a hazard to those that are there. Secondly, the issue at hand for the board to address tonight is not specifically one property. The way that that, that amendment is proposed, it would allow any that any building that was built, designed, intended or ever used as a hotel in the residential district in the village of Fleischman's to continue regardless of how long it had ceased. So any building you find in the village of Fleischman's that was used at some point can be construed to be intended or built to be a hotel in the residential district would therefore be allowed to be a hotel if this amendment was passed. And that's exactly the goal of this owner. And I do agree with Anita Rubin, this is a way to circumvent so there's no oversight of the village.
Hiram, thank you. Alex and Zach. So
Hello.
Ready to go?
Okay, thank you, Winifred. Hi, my name is Alex Mastoon. We are new residents. We are also on Ellsworth. Need to meet you, Steve Greenstein. And I'm against this proposal. I, this amendment, I'm not for it. I see law and if law is not, is being, is trying to be bypassed from what I understand, just as Hiram so eloquently said, then there's no, nothing equal about it because law is law, right? So I don't really quite understand why we're having a conversation about bypassing law. It's something that everyone needs to adhere to. The same processes need to go for everyone. That way Pandora's box does not open. And so that is why I'm personally against it because I consider myself a law-abiding citizen as I hope my neighbors would be. So I'm a little concerned. I have been talking to people new and old of this village and I'm really excited. We're, we're, me and Zach are pro-business. We have so many ideas. Winifred, we talked and we, I would love to do a coffee shop or something. We would love to get Fleischman's thriving. So I, I see, I see a good future. I hope we can all stay in harmony and have good conversations moving forward. But I don't believe that anyone should bypass any laws that are in place. And this amendment seems like a, it's there, like Hiram said, there's no, that there is some flood, they're in a flood zone. So when it was done illegally, if I did that, I'd be in trouble. So why should anyone else be able to do that if I might be able to do that, you know? We, we, we should all be on the even playing field and this smells a little off to me. So that's, that's me and I'm, I'm done. His time.
I just wanted to say something really quickly. I mean, I, I'm really excited that we bought in Fleischman's. We've been meeting so many great people in the community and, and like Alex said, we want to see this community thrive. And I remember when this proposal was first brought up, only two weeks after these trustees were elected, neither of them were really able to articulate what this law meant in terms of zoning, in terms of its benefits, in terms of why it's trying to be expedited through the pipeline to circumvent laws already in place, to circumvent the process that everyone needs to go through as a property owner, whether they're buying a home or they're trying to run a hotel. That just doesn't make any sense outside of its obvious conflict of interest. And I think that we need to stop pretending and doing charades and, and saying, I'm friends with so and so and whatever, because this is clear conflict of interest. It's clear, it's a clear attempt to circumvent the law. And additional lawsuits that are being brought against the village will do the absolute opposite of what Stuart and Sam are saying this will do, which is benefit the village. It's actually harming the village. We're stepping backwards in trying to do all of this stuff. It's very frustrating and it's very concerning as someone who we just bought a home here, we're hearing about all of these lawsuits. We're hearing about threatens, threatening things that people have done. We ourselves, after speaking out, encountered hostility. So we're sort of wondering like, what did we get ourselves into? And I would be eager to hear from other new homeowners here who didn't know that this has been going on for quite a while, lawsuits against the Hiram Davis himself, all of this stuff. It's, it's ridiculous.
It's concerning and it's a little scary to be honest. So that's our time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Todd Pascarella.
Hello, I'm Todd Pascarella. Thank you for your time. I'm going to try to cut down and not repeat things that the people have said here.
Voter, property owner, other?
All of the above. Longtime resident voter, property owner, proud Fleischmanian. So I would just like to start out by saying that while, while examining the zoning law for possible changes is a good idea, I believe, because there are things that, that can be updated. This particular approach, this, this spot change is, is not the answer. Creating an unregulated hotel essentially would, would, would create possible danger and fire hazard and, and death, you know, potentially. A lot of the hotels, most of the hotels in this village built in that era burned down. And, you know, if they're, heaven forbid, there are people in, in the hotel at that point, that could lead to serious injury or death. Also, be, being unregulated in these, these, this day and age means that, you know, we'd be ignoring the ADA, which unfortunately a lot of the old buildings need updating for, for that. And another huge one that the village has been experiencing has been the sewage backup from, from waste coming out of these motels and hotels with all the wipes and everything else that's in there. The sewer system really needs to be evaluated as to whether or not it can sustain this in any given area where, where, you know, this hotels would pop back up. So rather than this idea, a better idea would be to take a holistic approach to reviewing the entire zoning and, and try to, try to address multiple problems that have been identified. And these also include parking requirements downtown that are impossible to comply with. Things like that, that like could solve this issue potentially, which would be to add motel and hotel, hotel usage and other appropriate special permitted usage, uses to the districts where they're not there. That, that would solve the problem if, if the board agreed to do that, but it would also stay within the process of doing the site plan review and having all the fire and other safety checks in place. And, and another, another huge issue that needs to be addressed is, or actually probably even much more pressing than this one, is the housing affordability crisis. You know, we're, we're, we need to look at all these things and, and take a fresh look at the zoning. My very good friend, Bill Burns, mentioned the equal application of the law. But I, I kind of see it differently here. This is a singling out a, a use, a single, a, a one particular use and not others. And then just arbitrarily identifying that as being grandfathered while, while ignoring all the others. You know, why not, why not allow any use that's ever happened on any property to happen again? I mean, that, you know, would, would not be fair to other people who have property who would maybe like to use it for a historical use and aren't. This, this would lead to a ton of unintended consequences potentially, too, too many for me to even dream up and, and mention in a minute and a half here. But rather, you know, what, what would happen is that there would be a precedent set to basically break all precedent and, and, and to end the respect for the zoning law, period. In, as opposed to what should be, which is the community should have a dialogue, very in-depth, lengthy if necessary, and reach a consensus on updating the zoning. It's been 10 years since it was passed. It was passed back then with the vision at hand to address specific problems, junkyards, the potential development of the Bel Air Resort, other things that were, that, that were bearing on the village at the time, which have shifted. It's 10 years later. We need, we, we should take another look at this. So I would really urge the village board to vote no on this amendment. But I would also strongly recommend immediately starting the process or reviewing the zoning law in its entirety for the purpose of making proper amendments and, and updates. And I would fully support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Daniel Bezzol, do you want to come back in?
Yes, thanks. Hi, my name is Dan Bezzol. I live at 1077 Main Street with my wife, Elizabeth, and I'm a property owner. We vote in the village. Elizabeth votes in the village. I'd like to speak against this proposed law. I'm not strongly opposed to it, but I think there's a few considerations I'd like to add to the discussion. It's not, often I find myself, well, in the past, I've disagreed with Hiram about a certain fence. I think some of you might remember, but I have to agree with him in this case. And some of the others that have spoken tonight. Essentially, these land use laws are here to protect the health and safety, the environment of the people in the village. And what this proposed amendment does is it allows one property to circumvent these laws. Now, we all want Fleischman's on the map, but there's some reasons I don't think Fleischman's should be on the map. Like, we all know what happened with that apartment block in London that lit on fire like a match and killed all those people. I don't want Fleischman's to be on the map for that reason. And we have a lot of old homes in the village here. And if we circumvent the fire laws, I could be, lead to all sorts of problems on Wagner Avenue and where I live, just reasons why we have these types of laws in this whole village. I think to a large degree, this discussion has been mischaracterized by some, maybe even deliberately. A lot of assumptions have been made and I think we need to reevaluate those assumptions and really just make sure we know what we're talking about here. So I think everyone has projected their own sensibilities and their own, in some cases ideologies onto this discussion. And I think that's not appropriate for this discussion. This is about one very narrow amendment. And I think we should just step away from our ideologies. For example, we've heard, you know, from the pro-business community. Well, I'm, I'm very pro-business. I think there's a lot of, been a lot of references made to the parking situation on Main Street. That could be improved and that would be a pro-business solution. I'm for that. I strongly support Avi and I support the development of Palace Hotel, but that's not what this law does. It's not what it's about. It's about avoiding the legal process and avoiding the process of obtaining variances and setting matters before the planning board. And that essentially means that it removes public oversight over the health and safety with respect to the Palace Hotel. I don't think that's appropriate. Where's the evidence? Like, where, where have we heard any evidence that the developer of the Palace Hotel can't afford the, to comply with the zoning laws? Where have we heard the evidence that he can't afford to obtain these variances? Now, I think as Bill Burns mentioned himself, everyone on the zoning board is strongly in favor of granting these variances to the Palace Hotel. So I think, you know, this whole notion that it's, you know, we've been presented a false choice that it's either this law or no, no business development at the Palace Hotel. I don't think that's an accurate characterization of the issue. We've also heard some innuendo that to oppose this law is to be discriminatory. Now, Elizabeth and I have always lived in a citic neighborhood. Now, Elizabeth and I have always lived in his cytic neighborhoods and, you know, I don't think it's about that. Like we, my opposition to the law is not discriminatory. I don't think anyone's opposition to the law is discriminatory. Zoning is about land use. It's not about people. It's about the health and safety of people in the village. So I, I don't agree with that characterization at all, that it's a, an issue of discrimination. And I don't think that's, I think that's very misleading to say that to oppose this law is to somehow deviate from Fleishman's as long history as a very diverse place. And I think Fleishman should be very proud of that diverse history and should continue it. But I, I don't, I don't think this, I think that's a red hearing for this discussion. Now, as a lawyer, I would raise serious concerns about whether or not this proposed law is spot zoning. I think it's granting, essentially allowing, um, I, I think this law as it's, as it's proposed is illegal. I think it's, uh, I'm sure, uh, we might hear from some board members that this might be spot zoning and I have to, I'm sorry. When are you trying to interject?
Trying to wrap, wrap, wrap up your final comments.
Oh. I've gone on too long. All right. So I, I think just because, uh, the applicant here is, is suing, suing the village. I, I don't think, uh, should be any, should even factor into this discussion. For all we know, I mean, people could, could, uh, could sue the village to, uh, strike down this law because it is illegal spot zoning. After it's passed. So I, I, I think that's kind of a wash and shouldn't really factor into the discussion. Sorry for going over my time, Winifred.
Okay, so we, the next round, Marilyn and, and then Vicki. Marilyn, uh, where are you?
All right. Um, I want to say that, um, I agree with Hiram and Dan and Alex and the last Dan who spoke and Anita and also Todd. Remember, when laws are put into place.
Marilyn, would you please announce yourself and voter?
Oh, I'm sorry. Apologies. My name, I'm Marilyn Ringel. I'm a homeowner in Fleishmans. I agree with, uh, Dan and Alex, the other Dan, Anita and Todd. You have to be, you know, there's a saying, be careful what you ask for because you might get it. Spot zoning is a very bad idea. You have to think of what the implications are if you pass something like this. Two years, three years, four years, 10 years down the road. It's not just what's happening now at the present. Now, as far as the palace goes, and I just want to say, if I, if I'm correct, Chris Plant, I had heard, actually manages or is involved with, um, this property. I believe he's a manager of some sort. But anyway, he was the code officer, I believe, during the time that this property was taken over. And, um, there were people staying at the palace. I thought at that time was actually open and running as a hotel. So how this whole thing was coming about, I'm rather surprised. But anyway, I guess maybe it should have been open. Anyway, but the other thing too is that oftentimes past behavior is a predictor of future behavior. And as far as what the history is with these owners, I will tell you this, and I have nothing to hide, and I believe I'm correct, that when Anita mentioned the woman that was harassed and had to call the troopers, I am that woman. I was harassed because I spoke up against a situation that wasn't very good. It involved another, uh, another, uh, village, um, owner in a ZBA. And I was harassed and followed and I had to call the troopers for protection. The flagstone was supposed to have been shut down last year according to the Health Department. As someone who faces right on the flagstone, there were people running and out of that hotel when it was supposed to have been shut down, two, three o'clock in the morning with flashlights. This owner has, I will say, you have to look at the history. You know, as far as the discriminatory business, we have to just stop this whole thing. All right? I mean, really, I, I'm Jewish. That shouldn't really matter. We all want to be treated on the same plane. I mean, if it's like, well, I can't get what I want, I'm going to sue. We can't live this way. We don't want to be, no, we want to, if you want to grow this village and have a good reputation, this doesn't help. It's bad. So what I could tell is that as far as the board goes, if you vote in favor of this and down the line, things don't look good. This is why people, myself and other members of the community are stating what we're stating because it's a disaster waiting to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Vicki?
Thank you, Winifred, very much for recognizing me. Um, I'm gonna, uh, keep my comments on a very narrow plane. I'm sorry?
Announce your name.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay. Vicki Jericho, uh, my husband and I have been property owners here for the past 30 years. I don't want to talk about the various, suggestions that this is in any way, uh, related to any kind of discrimination. That's nothing to do with discrimination. It really has to do with a set of rules for everybody. Does everybody follow one set of rules or another set of rules? But anyway, I want to limit my remarks to, to grandfathering because I think this is what the issue is about. The petitioner here, uh, wants to be grandfathered. And if he wants to be grandfathered, there has to be some legal basis for that. Now, it is my understanding that in commercial law, there is a difference between acquiring a business and acquiring the assets of a business. When you acquire a business, you not only acquire the land, the buildings, the equipment, but you also acquire everything else. You acquire the customers, you acquire the employees, you acquire the debtors and the creditors and everything else. But in this case, when petitioners acquired the palace, there was no operation. That business had been out of business for at least seven or eight years, as I recall. So if there was no operation, there could have been no business. And he did not acquire a business. He did not acquire a going concern. He acquired land and building. He only acquired the assets of the prop, of the assets. He did not acquire a business. Therefore, there could not have been any grandfathering, and he is not entitled to grandfathering. Now, having said that, I also want to say that everybody that I have spoken to is in favor of having the palace be in operation. There is no objection to the hotel itself. The problem with grandfathering is a problem that we can encounter down the road. While this operator may be responsible and may, um, you know, adhere to the laws and run a more or less decent place. If it's grandfathered, there is nothing to prevent a future operator from doing pretty much what he wants, including turning this into an SRO. Also, the, uh, zoning amendment, as it's written, is ridiculous on its face. And the reason it's ridiculous is for the reason that Todd already said. And that is that if you say that any past use is grandfathered, in this case, they're limiting it to hotels. But if you say that all hotels and anything that was a hotel in past use is automatically grandfathered and can be resurrected, then you've opened a Pandora's box. And then any other past use can then be resurrected. So Mr. Horaznik, for example, who was the source of a lot of litigation for this village because of his five junkyards, could theoretically come back and say, well, we have, you have set a precedent in your zoning law where anything that had a previous incarnation can be resurrected. And now we have five junkyards and five SROs and whatever else you want. You know, communities that have weak zoning have weak property values and they have poor quality of life. And if we let this go through, that is what we are bringing upon ourselves. Thanks, Winifred.
Thank you, Vicki. Do we have, Bill, you, is that a request to speak again? Wait a minute. Is there anyone else?
If you don't mind, my name was mentioned a couple of times, just to point a personal privilege. I just want to assure that our, our newcomers particularly, that nobody is circumventing or trying to circumvent the law here. That in fact, the petitioners came to the zoning board of appeals asking for an interpretation of the zoning law. There's nothing clear in the zoning law that clearly says this is what should happen. It's kind of like, say, the Citizens United case at the Supreme Court. So three people said they interpreted the zoning law that since there's, uh, the grandfathering was appropriate and found evidence in the zoning law to support that. Three people said, uh, no, the grandfathering is not appropriate and found evidence to say that. But it's not as if anybody, anybody was trying to circumvent the law. And now the village board is talking about changing the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, we have another comment from Jetty, Chris Plant. Chris, oh. Did you unmute from?
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, just another quick comment. Um, also, people are saying, uh, fire safety, safety circumvention is a concern. Uh, every year, the, every hotel or commercial property gets fire inspection. And also the Department of Health has to also do a fire inspection and, uh, full inspection of the building for safety. So I'd just like to bring that to everyone's attention, that, uh, that happens and that, because you open up, uh, a hotel or pre-existing commercial use, there are, uh, certain regulations that have to be, still have to be met. This is not just a free for all as it's, uh, led out to be. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Yvonne and Yvonne and Larry. Yes, and then Daniel again. Yvonne? And then Larry? Okay, Yvonne? And Steve again. So hopefully, individuals who want to speak a second time are, are presenting new information and not providing support to existing recommendations. So Yvonne?
Okay, um, my name is Yvonne Reuter. I live on Wagner Avenue in Fleishmans. And I am also one of the members of the zoning board of appeals. I'm not quite sure why this request was made because, as Bill Burns said, the, the five members on our board wanted to see and want to see the continuation of, um, the palace being run as a business. And we voted it to be a, not a hotel anymore. And we voted for it to become a lodging boarding house, which would allow the owners to go ahead with their business. But as Hiram said, and I am full agreement with Hiram, it requires some permitting. And that permitting, we told them that we would try to push them along as quickly as possible to get the permits and help them to satisfy them quickly. So I don't really know why there's even a request to change the zone because they were allowed to go ahead with their business. All they have to do is get some of the permitting and, and follow it. It doesn't seem, as Chris said, that it has to be that complicated to bring up every single little detail of what might, what, what was not done 100 years ago, but the place was built 100 years ago. And some things, of course, are different today. So I'm not sure. I, I vote against it, but because I don't see any point in why it even has to go through. And Todd mentioned some very good legal reasons why it shouldn't go through, and I'm in agreement with that. But they can go ahead with the business. Nobody wants them to close down the business. That's my statement.
Thank you, Yvonne. Larry?
Okay, I'll keep it short because it's, uh, running late. But basically, as Hiram and others have said, this stopped being a hotel back in 19, I'm sorry, 2007. The Health Department says it's not a hotel. The prior owner changed the sewer classification from non-residential to residential. And the zoning took effect in 2011, so there was no function there. It might have been, if the building was certainly there, no one's questioning that, but the operation was not there. Uh, and as Bill Burns has said, the, Ivana said, the ZBA says, hey, go ahead, go through the process. Go to the planning board, do what you have to do to get the permits. And I agree. Uh, this is an end run around that whole process. And the, uh, one of the definitions of zoning, of spot zoning, is the process of singling out a small parcel of land for a used classification totally different from that of the surrounding area to the benefit of the owner of such property and to the detriment of other owners. Now, the comp plan, uh, the zoning is based on the comp, comp plan. And the zoning says you can't have a hotel there. Uh, so, you know, that's spot zoning. And that's all I've got to say.
Larry, thank you. Steve? I recognize Steve. Steve Greenstein.
There we go. Hi, everybody. I'm glad I participated and listened a lot because now I'm much more updated on the information. I, as I said, I am probably the closest property owner to the Palace Hotel who's a full-time resident. I have no issue in discrimination. Uh, my neighbors now in the summer are mostly Hasidic when they come up. And then unfortunately, it's pretty quiet the rest of the year on that street. Those, those houses are empty. If I want to borrow, hey, can I borrow some sugar? No, because there's nobody there. So, uh, hearing Mr. Davis's, uh, I asked the question, will this happen to other properties in the village? Mr. Davis told me, yes. If this goes through, then it'll be carte blanche for the entire village, a new policy. Correct, Mr. Davis? Yeah. So I've learned a lot of things here. I've also learned more about the flood zone damage that sits very close to the river there, the, the creek. And it does rain a lot. I'm a little further back and a little higher up, so I don't have that damage. So yes, I'm fearful if someone gets caught in a flood there. It could very easily create a disastrous scenario if those codes were not, if it was not upgraded as Mr. Davis is, is talking about. So I've learned a lot tonight. I don't feel there's any discrimination, um, my part at all in this. I just feel more educated now. And as someone who lives really the closest to the palace, as I can see here, I would, I would vote against it because for safety reasons, now that Mr. Davis, who is the code enforcement officer, has educated me better. And I've also been better educated that this particular amendment will now affect the entire village. So yes, I will, I would vote against this particular amendment. It has nothing to do with discrimination in any shape, way or form, and I've just been more educated about it. So thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, I don't see anyone else who wishes to comment. Is, uh, wait. Anita and Dan. And Gil, oh, Gil Rubin. Let's. Yes, Gil, um, I recognize you then, um, then Anita and then Dan.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gil Rubin and I'm a longtime resident of Pine Hill. However, I am also the president of congregation Benay Israel, which is located on Wagner Avenue. And, um, so I've been listening to this, trying to get the background and trying to understand the issues that the palace would present. I have listened to Hiram, who comes in and inspects our building every year. In fact, I just made an appointment with him. And I feel that if you go ahead and change it just for one particular, you're opening up a Pandora's box, as someone said earlier this evening. I also am concerned about the traffic that would be brought to Wagner Avenue with an increase in the number of, I am not sure how big the building is and how many apartments and how many, um, visitors would be coming to the palace. So that is a concern. You are right next door to the park, which has numerous children who use it during the summer. You're also going to be opening up the swimming pool this year. There is no parking. I heard about a plan being possibly made to have onsite parking to alleviate the problem of parking on the street. I have not seen any plans, obviously. I don't. I don't know if the village has seen any plans of exactly what is going to be done. The other thing is circumventing the laws is not something that you want to do because then it allows anybody in the village to go ahead and do this under a threat of a suit, of a lawsuit. I understand that the town does not want to spend money on lawyers. None of the towns up in this area have the money. But I do not think that it's a good idea to open it up and to allow spot zoning, which it really is, for one particular hotel. So that is my opinion on it. Thank you very much for listening to me tonight.
Okay, uh, thank you. Um, Anita.
Winifred, thank you. Can you hear me? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this is not something that I thought of myself, but in discussion with someone else, they brought out the point that what would be the difference between having a boarding house and a hotel? I think that there seems to be some real concern that it must be a hotel as opposed to a boarding house, which the, uh, Zoning Board of Appeals said that, in which they were in favor. So what is the reason that it has to be a hotel as opposed to a boarding house? What are the restrictions that would take place between them? Would it be a matter of occupancy? Would it be a matter of how long someone can stay there? What are those considerations? In any event, I am firmly opposed to granting this because it is spot zoning. But I just, although it wasn't my, uh, original idea in discussion with someone else, I felt it was a valid point to bring up now. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Dan Belzil.
Uh, this question is for Mr. Plant, who spoke earlier. Are you an employee of the owner of the Palace Hotel? And if so, don't you think that was important to disclose? Because I just, I'm asking, I don't know. I believe so, though. That's my only question. So I'll, I don't know if you want to respond, but I just think that we should all know whose interests are, or lie where.
I think this is for public comment and, um, uh, Mr. Plant can respond or not. Comments?
I'll answer that if I'm unmuted.
Okay.
I was a, I was a subcontractor for, uh, Mr. Mendelvik for about two years. I am not anymore. I've moved on. But, uh, I'm also a code enforcement officer still in the Village of Margaretville, who, in the Village of Margaretville, is very pro-business. And, um, I'd just like to repeat quickly, uh, the planning board, what they had mentioned last planning board meeting, which was, it's a necessity for a village's survival to maintain businesses and to accept businesses. And according to the zoning that's in Fleischman's right now, any of the buildings, because they've all been built pre-zoning, is, uh, it's impossible to comply. So, um, it's, I believe it's in the best interest to move forward. That's all.
Thank you. So, is there any other comments of new information that has not been presented before? Okay, Zach Mastoon.
Hi, um, I really appreciate everyone speaking out tonight, um, asking questions and clarifying everything that's going on. Um, I was actually hoping to get some clarification from the two individuals that were proposing the spot zoning law. Um, when we first heard about it, um, Sam had articulated that, um, we need businesses to be operating year-round for Fleischman's to thrive. And, um, first of all, Sam, I support your business. I buy gas with you. I, I go in and buy things here and there. Um, I wondered if this hotel, if you can answer the question, is this a year-round business? Uh, were you told, where, could I book this hotel in December if I wanted to? Or if my friends wanted to come up and visit and I didn't have the room to do so? Um, and to Stuart, to, really to both of you, I just wanted to hear you, in your own words, articulate why we need to rush this change through for this one specific business, because that's exactly what's happening. So I was hoping...
Yeah, uh, Zach, but I, what I hear you saying is you're expressing concern and your, uh, your input is that you think that this is, uh, not disclosed well enough and that this is rushing the process too long. The, the board in its deliberations, which is open to the public, will have some discussions of that sort, uh, quite likely. Um, but, um, i- if members of the board wish to respond, but this was intended for input from the public.
Sure. I, and, and, and thank you, Winifred. I just think it, it's important that the public has access to the facts because I don't think they were ever really articulated. Um, when we first asked about it, Sam himself said that he didn't understand the zoning. Um, and so I was just hoping, you know, as, we, we just want to understand what's exactly being voted on. Um, I don't think, you know, that it's ever been defined.
Well, uh, on the, if you've had the opportunity to look on the website, uh, the zoning law that is being amended is articulated there. The SECRE, which defines the impacts, about the board's work to define the impacts of this change in law are articulated under 18 points. So, um, so the process of disclosing and engaging in the conversation of, of, of what, what this is, is a little bit beyond the scope of this particular meeting.
That's fine. I was just, I was just hoping to hear from the trustees themselves, but I could reference documents. Thank you.
Any other, uh, we have comment from Dan. Dan wishes to make a comment. So we got Dan helping.
Yes, I, I just wanted to say that the SECRE was in no means representative of the entire board. It was filled out by just one board trustee who is proposing this amendment. So, I just want to make that known to everyone.
Okay, uh, Ben Gailey, right, is that correct? Uh, and then, and Dan. Okay, um, Ben, or he, under Jetty, Jacobowitz and...
Or, oh, no, Jacob, wait, Jacobowitz, is, he was...
Jacobowitz. Can you unmute from your side there?
Yeah, I think I am now. You can hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you very much. Yes, my name is Ben Gailey. I'm the attorney for the owners of the Palace Hotel. And I'd like to respond to some of the comments that, that were made tonight. Let me, let me start with the comments that, that Mr. Davis made. First was that there was the possibility that the renovations in the hotel building might exceed 50% of the value. Mr. Davis himself told the Zoning Board of Appeals that the cost of those did not exceed 50%. So that's a non-issue. It's a false statement. Secondly, Mr. Davis insinuated that building permits have not been obtained for all the work that was done. Uh, that's a false insinuation. Um, the property owner received building permits for all of the work that was done there. Uh, oh, and this, most importantly, or no, all important. Um, Mr. Davis said that if this law is passed, that any hotel in the entire village, or former hotel, or any building that had, used to be a hotel in the entire village, could be changed back into a hotel. That is completely false as well. First of all, the law deals only with the residential zoning district. And secondly, to my client's knowledge, and I expect to everybody's knowledge, um, the only building, um, in the residential zoning district that was, uh, designed, constructed, and operated as a hotel is the Palace Hotel, which leads me to the, the, the statements about, about spot zoning. Um, passing this law would not be spot zoning. Um, Mr. Riley read one of the definitions of spot zoning. Um, and the very important part of that is that it's zoning that is done to the detriment of surrounding property owners. And there's been, there's, nobody said a word here about there being any detriment to surrounding property owners. That's a requirement. The layman's idea of spot zoning is that it affects just a single property or affects, uh, you know, a few properties in a certain area. That's only part of the definition of spot zoning. The other part is that there must be a detriment to surrounding property owners, and there must not be any benefit to the public, to the village as a whole. And this zoning amendment, um, would benefit the village. We've heard that tonight already. Um, it'll bring more tourists and accommodations to the village. Uh, it'll bring vibrancy to the village streets. It'll bring business to the village businesses. And not only will be, there, will there be no detriment to the surrounding owners, it will benefit the owners. Because if this building cannot be operated as a hotel, there's, the property owner can't afford to put further investment in it. The building will deteriorate to the detriment of the historic district, to the detriment of the neighbors. So allowing the operation of, as a hotel will continue that investment in the building and will therefore benefit the historic district and surrounding property owners. In addition, I'll just point out in that vein that this property owner has also renovated about 10 houses in the residential zoning district, in that historic district. So the property owner has already done a great deal to enhance the village's historic district. Let me just address a couple other comments. Uh, first of all, there was some concern about, there was a statement that at another hotel, um, the owner had constructed more hotel units than permitted. I don't know anything about that. But what I can tell you is that, uh, the owner commits to having no more than the existing, the current 26 hotel rooms in the Palace Hotel. And the owner commits to complying with all applicable regulations. And that includes, as was noted earlier, the annual inspections by both the village code enforcement officer and the Department of Health. So those concerns about a fire hazard or, or building code hazards, are not legitimate concerns because they'll get the annual inspection, um, from two different agencies. Uh, there was a few comments made about bypassing or circumventing the laws. Uh, this is not bypassing anything or circumventing any laws at all. It's really just clarifying, uh, the village's existing law, uh, which allows non-conforming uses to continue. The village zoning law does not have an abandonment provision, which requires an intent to abandon. It does not have an amortization provision. So the zoning law allows this use to continue. And this, what this zoning amendment will do is clarify the existing law. Somebody mentioned a conflict of interest. I have no idea what they're talking about. There's no conflict of interest here. Oh, there's a concern that, uh, the building could be turned into an SRO. Uh, that cannot happen. It, it will be allowed as a hotel. An SRO is, is, you know, is a residential use. Um, this would be a hotel use. If you know SRO there, there's a concern about how junkyards might come back. Um, there's no concern in there either. There's a special provision in the village's zoning code that deals with junkyards. It gave junkyards a seven-year amortization period to wind up their business, and then the junkyard had to cease. Um, so that protects the village from that. And by the, print, although there was an amortization provision put in the zoning law for junkyards, it was not put in the zoning law for hotels or any other use, which demonstrated that the village board, back when the law was adopted, made a conscious decision not to do that, to instead allow hotels to continue without an amortization provision and without an abandonment provision. Somebody made a comment that the zoning law says that a hotel cannot be in that location. That's not true. Um, a hotel can remain in that location as a lawful non-conforming use. The zoning law allows that. The zoning law permits that. Uh, there's a question about whether the palace would be a year-round operation. Uh, the owner has committed to that, provided there's, there's year-round tourist business. Uh, for instance, if there's, uh, tourists who are going to Bel Air Mountain during the winter, the hotel will be open for those tourists. And there was a question about, um, the difference between a hotel and a boarding house. There's no way the palace can, can qualify as a boarding house. Uh, the definition of boarding house, um, states that individual cooking facilities cannot be provided, and in the palace, each of the 26... And then there are special requirements in the zoning code that deal with boarding houses. Wow. One of those is that the owner must be an occupant of the building. Another is that there could be no more than five bedrooms. Um, and it goes on to say, no more than five bedrooms in a single-family dwelling may be used. So, the whole idea of a, of a boarding house in the village is that it's in a residence. It's in a single-family dwelling. And so that's clearly not the case here. Um, there's also a limitation to, uh, you can stay, a person can stay no more than 14 consecutive days. And the, and so the palace can't comply with, with any of those provisions. And it's, it is just not a boarding house. A boarding house occurs in a single-family dwelling. In the, in the zoning code, it's grouped with the same regulations as a bed and breakfast, which, as we know, is typically a single-family dwelling. And typically, the owner is the occupant of it. So there's just no way that the house qualifies as a boarding house. And then, so it could never be approved, this one.
You have more points, Ben?
Uh, just one more. Um, there's a concern about the flood zone. There was, there was a termination made by, by a prior village board years ago, um, that the building was not in danger. At that time, the village board, uh, turned down the opportunity to purchase the building with FEMA funds, um, which paid for a great deal of the cost. Uh, but since the building was not in a dangerous situation in the flood zone, um, you know, that purchase by the village was not made. Uh, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Ben. So, uh, so new, uh, we have a new comment from Janet Fleischman.
Do you hear me?
Yes. Yes, Janet, we can hear you. You just muted yourself again, so can you unmute yourself from your side?
Thanks. Now, do you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Janet Becker. I'm a full-time resident at 514 Wagner Avenue. I want to vow, want to confirm that no one is against opening this property. As others have said, and listening to Ben, the attorney, I think the issue is if I follow the law in my house and I follow the law in my business, there's no reason that this business owner, Mr. Ben Mendelvik, can't follow the law just the same to achieve his goal. But most importantly, you made a point, it won't affect the neighbors. Three years ago, or I guess two years ago, when it was used as a hotel, as I lay in my bedroom at 12 and 1:00 in the morning, I listened to all the people in the streets on Wagner Avenue, kibitzing, laughing, schmoozing, I heard kids, and that was lovely. And I would love to have been a part of that, but I was laying in my bed attempting to sleep. I did not complain. I listened to it for several nights on the weekends as the noise level occurred. So when you say it doesn't affect neighbors, that's an untruth. If there were, however, an indoor location where they could fattenize the people that were visiting the hotel, then that wouldn't bother the neighbors, just like in any restaurant, bar, uh, visiting location in New York City. People don't stay in the streets all night and talk. They go indoors and they visit there. So, I just wanted to share that it, it did affect neighbors. Thank you very much. And thank you for everything you've put together, Winifred, and giving everyone the opportunity to... Thank you for everything you've put together, Winifred, and giving everyone the opportunity to be heard.
Daniel, Dan, number three, you're, you're coming back a third time?
Yeah.
Is there anyone else in the mix? No.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say that there's a word that lawyers use that's come into parlance among, in the legal profession, it's conclusory and it's a naked conclusion devoid of any facts. It might be true, might not be true, but again, the facts just haven't been presented. And I've heard a lot of conclusory statements from the applicant in his corner. And I just want to go down a quick list of them. So the first thing we heard from Mr. Plant is that it's impossible. We have to use the word impossible many times for the applicant to go through the normal process of obtaining variances. Did you hear any facts about it being impossible? I didn't. So I think that's a little bit conclusory. We just haven't heard any evidence that it's impossible. So without that, I, I would be inclined to disagree that it's impossible. Second thing is we heard some statements against what Mr. Hiram Davis said about, he was, it was implied that he was misleading in some way. Well, I found Mr. Gailey's comments to be internally inconsistent and self-contradictory. If, for example, it looked to Mr. Davis that not all the work had been accounted for in terms of building permits, then how can Mr. Gailey claim that the work did not exceed 50% of the building's assessed value? It's contradictory. It, I mean, maybe, maybe additional work was done and it did exceed 50% of the value. Again, if the building permit plans, if the building permits weren't pulled, then I don't see how Mr. Bailey can fairly make that claim. Now, the last thing we heard is that, from a legal perspective, it's not spot zoning. I'm gonna tell you, as a lawyer, I've read the case line. I don't agree with that. I think that it is spot zoning. And again, I find that the statements to the contrary are conclusory. We've heard, for example, that it won't affect the neighbors. Well, how do we know that? We haven't had any site plan review of this hotel and the, the use of it as a hotel. So without site plan review, how can you, that's, that's the process whereby the applicant goes before his neighbors and explains, and the planning board asks him questions, and the planning board determines whether or not it is in fact detrimental to the neighbors. Again, this whole law is so that he does, the applicant doesn't have to face site plan review. So for Mr. Gailey to claim that it doesn't adversely affect the neighbors, well, that puts the cart before the horse and it's, begs the question really of whether it does in fact harm the neighbors. So I think I'm just gonna leave with that. And yeah, I think I, the more I've heard from the applicant's corner, the more I oppose this, this application. Thank you.
Michael? Well, actually, Ben, you wanted to respond. And then, Michael, where's Michael?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, just in response to that, I listed all the reasons, all the requirements that the, that the palace would substantially fail to meet as a boarding house. The most important of those being a boarding house occurs inside a single-family dwelling. And that's not, that's not what this is. So I completely stand by those comments. Secondly, with respect to the 50% of work, the comment was made that perhaps the building inspector doesn't know what improvements were made. The building inspector conducted at least 18 formal inspections of the work that was occurring in that building. He knows full well all the work that was done. Finally, concerning the, you know, any possible detriment to the neighbors, tonight is the process. Tonight is the opportunity for neighboring property owners to express their concerns. So that, that process has been followed by the village.
Thank you. MJ, you say MJ? You, you're unmuted because I don't see him on my screen.
Hey, I'm here. Hey, so I, I'm, yeah, I'm Michael. I'm a, I'm a full-time resident of Fleishman's. I live on Wagner. Yeah, I mean, I, I do have some concerns. I am a neighbor. We all know how it is here in the summer. So I, I definitely think this has to be studied more. This has not been a hotel for close to 15 years. And this, you know, owner already has 12, 13 properties. I, I'm just trying to understand the rush in changing this from a boarding house to a hotel. Secondly, why didn't this individual do their paperwork? You know, if they indeed own a monopoly of the neighborhood, then they should have done their due diligence. I'm not anti-it. I would love to see it being a hotel. It's really, it's cute looking, but I would love to see it being open to everybody, every type of person. You know, could I come? You know, could, you know, transgender people come? I'm just trying to understand what type of person could actually come. And so, yeah, I definitely want to make sure that this neighborhood is very inclusive to everybody. And I, you know, and I definitely want to make sure that, we already know how the traffic is here in the summer. And I just want to make sure that a quality of life still, you know, is, you know, you know, adhered to. So I am quite concerned that, you know, this has not been studied. We don't know the impact that it will have in a residential neighborhood. Most of the properties are actually in the business district. This would be the first, and it does seem like this would be a carving out of a section that isn't a largely quiet neighborhood. So I'm just, I'm really trying to understand why this is being fast-tracked. A lot of the people that have talked seem, you know, like they are somewhat invested allegedly in this project. So I'm, I'm just trying to make heads or tails of this. Why, why, why are we rushing this right before summer season? For this one particular property that's in a residential neighborhood? Thank you.
Hiram?
I'd just like to say a couple things very briefly. First of all, all three of the things Ben Gailey quoted me as saying he manipulated and said wrong. I said that this would only affect the residential district. And he said, I didn't say that. I said it would be the whole village. I won't go over the whole thing. It's recorded. Listen to it because all three things he said, he manipulated and presented incorrectly. I will also say this, I am the code enforcement officer. I think I would know the work that was done instead of the attorney. I saw pictures in the lawsuit they presented to us that showed work that was done that I did not inspect and did not have permits for. So he can argue all he wants, but I am the code enforcement officer for the village. And I have not been allowed in that bill, in that building for many months. And there's been continued work going on. And anybody that lives around it knows that.
Thank you, Hiram. Is there any, any new comment that, that has not been presented before? So Steve, is this something, is this new information that you're presenting?
Yes, this is new information. Because the attorney just said that there was some sort of forum that neighbors could have expressed disagreement in some way. This is the first time I ever heard about it. And I, and I, I live the closest to the property. This is the first public, I was never asked about noise or about parking or what I felt about it. And I, my home is the closest to this property. So this is the first time I've ever heard about the whole situation. When I got a Zoom email from the village of Fleishman's. So I disagree with that. I've never been asked. No one's knocked on my door. No one told me about it until I got a Zoom email. I just wanted to make that clear. That's, that's all I have to say and respond.
And so who, who else? Oh, Janet?
Yes, thank you, Janet Becker. I'd like to know what the phone number is that I could call to have someone make a reservation at the property or at any of the properties.
Is that a comment that you're making?
A comment? Because I don't believe there is a phone number. I actually researched it. In addition, other properties Mr. Mendelvik said he was gonna have open in the ski season, he doesn't have open and never did for the winter usage because there's a need to have properties for skiers. And the lawyer mentioned that it was going to be available for ski season. It's proved that that isn't an accurate statement from previous statements that were made at other properties. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Gailey?
My notes clearly say that Mr. Davis said that the law would take effect through the entire village. It's not really important. The fact is that it does not. It applies only to the residence zoning district, which I made clear. Building permits have been obtained for all work that requires a building permit. Mr. Davis said he's been, not been in the building for many months. He told the ZBA he hadn't been there for a year. So there's certainly discrepancy there. The purpose of this public hearing tonight is to hear from the public. So that's, that's the process, the legal process and fair process that's been had. And finally, the last comment that was made was that property owners had said that there are other motels would be open for the winter season. Those statements were never made. That commitment was never made until it was recently made to, to the mayor and the board of trustees. One last thing I'd like to do. Oh, in addition to the 18 formal building inspections carried out by the, the building inspector, he says in an email that his normal routine is to go to all of the Mendelvik properties every day. So he clearly knew what was going on. Lastly, just so, just so the public is aware, what the zoning code sets is that non-conforming uses other than junkyards, the buildings or open land may be continued indefinitely. The building inspector has made a recommendation to the board of trustees to change that so that it says that when, when an operation ceases for a period of a year, then lawful non-conforming use must also cease. That's a proposal. It doesn't say that. Right now it says the opposite of that. It says that non-conforming uses other than junkyards may be continued indefinitely. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Only one thing. It was my practice to go there. Chris Plant set it up with me to just go by those buildings on a daily basis. But I have evidence from quite some time ago where the owner, Mr. Mendelvik, said that we are not allowed, no one from the village town or anyone is allowed on any of his properties for any reason, and he stopped me. Before that, I used to go to everything. Mr. Gailey is manipulating the whole thing on purpose. Tell the truth.
Okay, so here we are. Hearing no more, seeing no more. One last comment, Mr. Gailey?
Yes, I'm sorry, but I can't let that, that comment go without a response. The building inspector was never barred any of the buildings. What Mr. Mendelvik said is that if you want to come and inspect my properties, let me know. I'll say fine and you come. They simply said that you can't just come in wherever you want. Now, in addition, I have an email here that was written from the former village attorney to Mr. Davis. He says, I am questioning whether you had the right to rescind the building permits. First, I don't read Avi's email as preventing you from doing inspections because it didn't. The email said you need Avi's or Abe's consent before you do inspections. And that's what the law says.
Okay. Mr. Davis?
It is the owner's responsibility to call me for an inspection, not me to call them when one's required. They have never called me for an inspection.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gailey?
Yeah, I have another. This is a, this is a form from the building department dated November 17 of 2020, signed by Mr. Mendelvik, saying, I hereby give permission to Hiram Davis, code enforcement officer, to enter my property. I'm also looking here at a list of requested inspections and inspections made by Mr. Davis. Not really germane to tonight's topic, but I can't let the untruths go unresponded to.
Okay, I think, I think we've heard a fair, fairly broad set of inputs from members of the community and people who have an interest in, in, in the zoning law and the adherence to zoning laws and to the process of change. And so I don't see any further requests for comments, so I would like to close this public hearing. So I'm gonna ask for a board member to make a motion. I'm not sure if that's appropriate in a public hearing, but let me just proceed in that manner. So can I have a motion to close the public hearing from a member of the board? Oh, could you raise your hand if you want to make the motion? Okay, Sam? Sam, it's a motion, motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second? Dan? It's Dan. All those in favor of closing the public hearing of members of the board? One, two. We, we have two votes. Dan? Jennifer? Sam?
Right here, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so motion carried. The public hearing is closed. We will now proceed to the, to the, to open, what time is it?
Seven forty.
Seven forty. So we will open a village board meeting. I hear open the, the May 24th special board meeting, the Fleishman's, seven forty. I'm gonna call a meeting to order. And Dan, are you here?
Yes.
Yes, and Sam is here. Jennifer?
Yes.
And where is?
Stuart, there's Stuart.
I'm here.
Stuart.
I'm here.
Okay, so, okay, thank you. So the agenda for this meeting is, one, to consider the, the SECA, the State Environmental Quality Review, document that has been circulated and posted. And secondly, to consider the zoning amendment and any other issues to come before the board. Do I have a motion to? Okay, so we, I want to put the motion on the floor for the State Environmental Quality Review document. Oh, board members, have you, you've all seen it, reviewed it? Yes?
I have.
Yes.
What is, what is the motion?
Do we have, who's making the motion?
Motion for what?
Okay, we are making a motion to adopt document that was circulated to the board.
I, I, yeah, okay.
So, so does anyone make a motion that we consider this document?
I make the motion, Woody Brent. I, Sam.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Second is, is Stuart. Okay. All those in favor of considering this motion? All those in favor of considering this motion?
Aye.
Aye.
What does considering mean? Are we voting to adopt it or are we?
My intention is to review this. Eighteen points.
Yeah.
And to, and to determine whether we are, whether the board is in. Accepts these eighteen points that relate to the determination and findings of the impacts. The environmental impacts of the zoning law change.
So this is a discussion that that we're doing.
Complete, then we open the discussion and review this. And, and determine if it's adequate.
Okay, so I.
Okay, so. So we have. Eyes of Jennifer, Sam, and Stuart. Okay. And I vote yes, so that's for Dan.
So this is just to review it, not to accept it, is that correct?
No, this is, we're, motion is on the floor. We're going to review it and we will vote on adopting it or, or, or turning it down.
Okay, so, so it's just to review it and then, and then to adopt it?
Yes.
Should we decide to adopt, should we call the question after we reviewed it? We would either accept it or, or reject it.
Okay.
Okay. So what's the pleasure of the board? Should we go through this item by item so that it, so that we can confirm whether we agree with these? The impacts as required through SECRE? Maybe, let me take one step back. This zoning law amendment, should we proceed to full voting on it tonight, requires us to adopt the SECRE. A secret document and also to adopt the zoning law. So the first step I'm proposing is we. Review the determination and findings of the SECRE document and accept it or reject it and then move on to the zoning law.
Can I say?
Yes, Dan.
I, I think the SECRE should have been filled out by a consultant. With, you know, impartial consultant as opposed to having it being filled out by a trustee who's in favor of the amendment being passed.
Okay. So I, so. So at this point. Are you prepared to review the comments that have been presented as part of the SECRE?
We can review it, but.
Okay, so is it the pleasure of the board that we go through this item by item?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay. Let's see, part one. Part one. This is, this is tough.
Yeah.
Part one establishes the fact that we had to do the long form called the FEAF, the full environmental. Assessment. As opposed to the short form, and that was recommended by the county planning department. So in, in accepting, in, in the. Part one, there are three parts to this. In part one, it says we are to utilize long form. So we're accepting the fact that we're doing the long form. Let me, that's basically the premise of, of part, of part one. It's a type, called a type one. In part two is where we really get into the meat. Item one, the impact, impact on land. Since no new construction, since new construction is not permitted by the local law, there is no impact on land. The building has the same footprint.
Yeah.
Do we? Okay, so thi- this document is five pages long, and so we are on page two. And it's a one-third down the, down the. Down the page. In consideration of part two of the FEAF, the board finds and determines as follows.
Construction requirements for the parking lot.
You're, you can't talk.
So the input down, impact on land, since no new construction is. New construction is not permitted by local law, there is no impact on land. Do, do, is there any counter discussion on that?
No. No.
Okay, impact on geological features. The same as above. There is no impact on geological features because there's no new construction.
Right.
Impacts on surface water. There, there is no impact on surface water.
Does that include the streams?
Does it include the streams? Stuart, you have any input into that?
I would say surface water, whatever, whatever falls from the sky onto the ground.
So, so are you saying there's no impact as a result of?
That's correct. There's no impact. There's no, no change that's going to affect.
Okay. All right. Item four, the impact on groundwater. There is no significant adverse impact on groundwater. The, the board notes that the Palace Hotel operated for many years. And the village's water and sewer systems had excess capacity provide for water and sewer service to all properties in the village. Comprehensive plan states that the water supply system has a capacity of 400,000 to 500,000 gallons. Let me. Sufficient to serve the needs of year-round residents and peak summer seasonal residents. The sewage treatment plant was designed to handle peak flows that occurred during the summer month. I wanted to add a statement reflecting the greater sewage flows and potential wipes in the system. Have an impact, may have an impact, but are not significant. As is, as with all the other properties in the residential zone. So I wanted to add that to the. To this document. Any, any further comments or concerns? Yes, Dan.
Dan is muted.
And is muted?
Yeah.
We should unmute, the board members should be unmuted.
There we go.
Yeah, so there is an effect, just as. Is a great effect for the wastewater treatment plant. Because, you know, we're probably one of the only, one of the only plants, just speaking to Jim Buchanan, who always gets a marginal. Review, and that's because of all the baby wipes that are passed through, through the water treatment facility. Having a, the hotel with at least 26 rooms or so, that means like probably 50 some odd people at least. And the increase in baby wipes is going to be tremendous. And I was just wondering, was, was a study, was a stu- Can you hold on one second, please?
Shannon, shut up.
Was, was a study done on the total amount of use of water and, you know, with the water treatment facility? I didn't see any study on that.
No, we, there was no independent study. However, we had input from the wastewater treatment plant operator. But no, there was no independent study done. That's correct.
So and he, and the wastewater treatment plant stu- person said that there would be an increase in flow, correct?
Yeah, he, he indicated that there, there is a potential increase, but it would not be significant, given the. The percent, the percentage increase in occupancy on Wagner Avenue would not drive a significant increase in the. The flows that would be experienced on Wagner Avenue.
I don't see how that is, that there's no, there's no one occupying the property now and there's no. Probably there's no, not many baby wipes coming through that area now, so I, I'd like to see the study on that.
Did that include 26 new rooms, Winifred? Was that?
Well, Stuart, do you want to?
The roof, yes, the rooms are existing.
Right.
The, the rooms are existing. They've been there for over 100 years.
Well, how many people have been in those rooms in the past?
Since the water treatment plant started.
Like, the, like, like you said, the, it will be no significant difference. From what's being done now.
The occupancy will be different. However, what he said is it's not a significant increase, but. Nevertheless, Dan's point of view is that, that this, this may not be adequate.
I, I had spoken to Jim and he has said no one had actually contacted him concerning the effect of. On the wastewater treatment plant concerning the hotel.
I, I, I hear what you're saying. I've had, been in touch with him over the last six weeks and he provided me with the, the information that I reported. But your point of view is it's not adequate.
Right. Right.
Or it might not be adequate. They're the experts.
All right, so. So we have, you know, Dan's concern is about item number four.
Yeah.
Number five, impact on flooding. Since the local law does not allow new development, there will be no potential flooding impact.
Flooding from the stream, flooding from.
Rain.
But flooding from opening the palace.
Yeah, but sewage flooding, the stream flooding. Because it is a, it isn't a flood plain, so.
Is, is the, is the parking area going to be parked? Is that going to be an area that it's paved and that would affect, or is it going to be, you know, grass? What, what is that going to be? I haven't seen a plan. On that. I've seen a plan that shows cars parked, but I don't know what the surface is going to be.
Right, the flooding. Impact on flooding. Since, since there's no, oh, can. Someone from the project respond to. The, the parking locations and whether it's impervious.
Right.
And would create a flooding hazard. Ben Gailey. You want unmute? I think you can unmute, unmute everybody. This is. Ben Gailey, yeah. Let's just unmute everybody. Yeah, unmute everybody.
The parking will, will be a pervious service.
Right.
Just to follow up on a prior one about the, the surface water. Streams are considered, you know, surface water.
That's what I thought.
Construction, and since there'll be a pervious parking service, it won't be any impact on the streams. And I like to note too, with respect to the. The impact on groundwater, the comprehensive plan says treatment plant has more than enough capacity. For future growth.
Yeah.
And the key, on all of these, the key is whether there's a significant impact as one of the trustees pointed out.
So item six, impacts on air. There. As a result of the hotel, no change in footprint or height, no impact. Impact on plants and animals. Oh, any comment on that?
No.
Seven, impact on plants and animals. No change in property structures, so.
You're here, Janet.
Any, any comments on that? Number eight, impact on agricultural resources.
No.
Nine, let me get to some meat. Impact on aesthetic resources. The highlighted items. The. The comprehensive plan refers to the village's historic buildings as one of aesthetically pleasing aspects of the community. Of which the palace is one. So there's, there's no negative effect on that, and there is room for parking for at least 26 vehicles behind the hotel and behind the adjoining building. So. It is the. The parking is removed from the, the Wagner Avenue and the front of the property, so. It seems to be no impact on the aesthetic resources. Any comments on that or any considerations on that?
If I might just, if I might just say something there, Winifred. Number one, I have seen no proposals on parking, but number two, if it's allowed to continue, they don't have to do anything with parking. So although they, they tell you they could have them parking spots, they don't have to do it.
Yes, I hear you.
Is, is this a board meeting or is this open to the, is it's open?
I, I recognize, Stuart, I recognized him as a technical resource.
So there hasn't been anything presented to the planning board about parking? Has there?
There has been no approach to the planning board, no, for any element of this project.
Right, because it never made it to the planning board, so. Yeah. But that was one of the issues with the planning board was parking, correct? One of the parking lights and noise.
Right.
So it would need to be addressed anyway.
So are you saying that this is addressed or not addressed?
It hasn't been addressed.
Well. It hasn't been addressed by whom? Sam, yes. I recognize. Unmute yourself, Sam, please.
I'm sorry. My apologies. Okay, parking is not required on this property if it comes down to. It's grandfathering. And. When it comes down to parking, I'm sure whatever we request, the board, the mayor, we will be. Pleased with whatever we request. At this point, you know, we're jumping, we're getting ahead of ourselves. Because the, the palace does not require parking as we already, as we know, and it's on the zoning law. That's all I have to say. So no, I don't have any negativity on this.
But it would. It would impact the community if there. It's a lot of parking, and this was something that needs to be addressed in order to. Make the community. Comfortable with what's happening here. I mean, park, parking is obviously a concern as, as are noise and, and light. And I don't think. It would be hugely difficult just to address in, if. If you had to go. If you had to go back to the planning board, then it would come up. Why not address it and have it taken care of? Because it is definitely an impact on the community, so. Yeah.
Um, Sam?
So, yeah.
And Dan?
Uh, Dan, uh, Jennifer Stewart, we already saw the area where the parking lot could be designed.
Yes.
So that's no problem. Like I said, we as the, uh, the owner, and I'm sure they will provide what we need. Um, parking is an issue. I'm sure they will have their engineer draw a plan and show us what the parking lot will look like. Again, the mayor needs to be pleased, everybody needs to be pleased, and we want to make sure the best for village of placement, so.
I agree, I agree. It just would have been helpful to have that. When it's a part of the environmental impact, it would just would have been helpful to have that now. That's all we're saying.
I, I agree also, but I don't, I don't want to wait to be pleased. I want to know for sure. I want to see, you know, be presented to the planning board what actually is going to be. I've seen it before in other properties in, in the village. I, I don't want this, I don't want to see this happen again like what's happened down Main Street.
So, great, so.
Excuse me, Mayor?
What are we doing here on the impact of aesthetic resources? There's a reference here to parking.
Yeah.
So are we deleting that? Are we saying there's no, there is impact on aesthetic resources?
No.
Yes, there is impact.
Yes.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yeah, yes, yes, Ben.
Yes, the parking plan has been, um, provided to all of the trustees.
Right.
We need a more detailed and engineered plan, you know, prior to putting in the parking lot, we'll do that. But in addition, the property owner commits to installing it 26 parking spaces behind those two buildings. There will be parking behind those buildings, not in front of the building, not on the street.
Pervious parking, correct?
Correct, that's correct.
So why is it not going to the planning board? Why, I don't understand why everyone is skirting this issue.
It's just don't need to go to the planning board. The issue here is the parking, and we're committing to the parking spaces.
And the site, the site plan, right?
Pardon me?
As part of this, what, what we're debating here is an impact of the zoning law. And, and the question about why aren't we going to the zoning, to the planning board is not the question here, it's whether we're going to adopt thi- this, uh, SECR. And, and your perspective is the, are, the impacts are not adequately defined and you want a different process than, than considering this. And, and, and so I, I mean, I want to find a way to move through this so that either we accept or reject it.
I
And then the, and do we can say to each one of these items, not acceptable and has to go to the planning board, not acceptable. So I think that's a way we could go through this and we could then decide yes or no. That, that we accept this or we don't accept this, but we're not in position to say it has to go to the, the planning board.
Uh, but we can say we would like clarification before we accept or reject, yes.
Yes, we want clarification.
That's what I'm asking for, just that additional layer of clarification, please.
Okay, so we're clarifying that there's a, that there's a commitment to, to the, this parking area.
Yeah.
26 spaces.
That's as much as we can say.
Yes.
And we've committed, if you need, if you, if the board of trustees wants a, you know, more detailed parking plan, we can provide that as well. But it has shown the parking plan to, to each of the, to the mayor and all of the trustees. Yes.
Yes, um.
The, the item that we're going through is, uh, the impact on the aesthetic resources. So that, that's what our question is right now.
Okay.
So if we feel that, that aesthetically it's going to, uh, change, impact, they're saying that the, the cars are going to be behind.
They're going to be behind, so no. No.
Okay, I think we've gotten input on, on that and we've got a, we've got a statement of intent as regard number nine on parking.
If I could only say one thing, Winifred, and then a verbal intent is unenforceable.
I, I hear you, yes. That's, yes, I understand. Uh, number 10, impact on historic and archaeological resources. Historic and archaeological, historic.
No, no, Winifred.
Oops, I lost, oh, wait.
You lost, you lost me?
No, I lost me.
Oh.
Um, the, uh, and, uh, the highlighted items here that the it, the board determined, the local law would have a positive impact on historical resources as it restores and maintains a historic property. The comprehensive plan states that there are 30 historic homes along Wagner Avenue, uh, that predate 1900 and that the Palace Hotel, Bene Israel Synagogue and Mount Athletico are also located in this area of the village. So the comprehensive plan acknowledges the presence in this, in this residential district as, uh, a historic resource.
Yeah.
So we don't know what impact it has on these, um, the most contiguous, because the ball field is on the National Historic Register and so is the synagogue, right?
Yes, uh, so we don't know what the impact is of the Palace Hotel on our, on our historic resources? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Does it have any impact? I, I don't know.
Does it have a negative impact?
That's what we're looking, yeah. Does it have a negative impact? And if parking is taken care of, I would assume not.
Nine.
Uh, right, just the final comment. This is helping to preserve the historic context in which these homes, including the three I just mentioned, were constructed. So that it makes the palace consistent with the neighborhood and the historic district. So we think it's, there's no negative effect.
Well, well, the car, it could be 30, 40 cars parked on both behind the palace and the adjacent property. I don't think that's going to look great. I don't think it's going to look too nice. So I don't know what the effect is. I mean, I, I would want to really see a study.
Okay, so Dan's concerned about this. Okay. Uh, going on to 11, impact on open space and recreation.
No.
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 Any, any comments?
Not common, good.
Yeah, impact on critical environmental areas, there are no.
Go back to the open space and recreation.
Okay.
So there's, since there's going to be a lot more cars and, and there's a lot of children playing in the area with the soccer games and, and the park is there, it, it could have an impact.
Do you think it would have a significant impact?
Yeah, I think it might have a significant impact. Plus, you know, with all, you know, we think about how many cars are going to be there, um, or buses, could be buses, you know, coming down the street there, you know, bringing people to this hotel, running at two o'clock in the morning, um, letting off lots of fumes in the area. That's an impact on the open space.
Wow.
I mean, I see that happening now on, on Main Street. A lot of times there's, you know, buses coming like two o'clock in the morning, uh, dropping off or picking up people.
Does that have a negative impact on, on the community?
Well, yeah, it certainly does.
No.
You know, Wagner Avenue, it certainly does.
But a significant negative impact on open space and recreation, that's the question. I don't see how a bus has any impact on open space and recreation.
Maybe a bus idling with the, with fumes.
I guess.
Well, that's, that's, that's illegal. Three, three minutes is the max, is my understanding.
That's right.
Well, then who's going to enforce it? Unless it happens, it does happen.
Dan has a concern. Any other concerns on this?
No concern.
No.
No.
Uh, critical environmental areas. Um, it's, it's not a critical environmental area, we're not a, um, no, no impact.
No.
Impact on transportation. Uh, slightly more traffic, uh, when hotel operations are, than when operations were suspended.
I would say a lot more traffic.
There's a lot more traffic when there are baseball games as well and
Yeah.
other things, so we have to take all of that into consideration.
If you, if I may, Winifred?
Yes.
If a, Dan, Dan's concern is traffic right now, so then we might want to tell the, uh, Pee Wee Soccer League to come by walk, don't bring their cars. I mean, the park right now is full when the kids come for practice on both sides of Wagner Avenue. So that's, it's irrelevant. Um, you know, these kids, they come in, they, the, the parents bring them and both sides are full of cars on Wagner Avenue. What do we do? We tell them not to come? So no, I don't think it's an impact.
I mean, the, the traffic pattern has to do with arrivals and departures and not, and not transit, as, as I would understand it.
Right. Yeah.
So arrivals and departures, um, okay, what's the typical times of arrivals and departures? Really late at night?
Any hotel, it's, 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 you know, departures and arrivals come at different times. There's, there's no like peak time. And that's the problem, everybody came at once.
Well, I, I did, I think that with this property, there will be a peak times, because most people come and leave at similar times. If, if it was a property that was catering to all, I would agree, but the property doesn't cater to the general public. It caters to one type of clientele. So I disagree with that, Ben.
Let me see if I understand what the concern is. If, if we have.
It's a transportation issue.
Yeah, if, if, if there is a, a estimated maximum load of 26 cars that arrive on a Friday between um, noon and four o'clock, they arrive and they park. It, it's a destination, it's a hotel. So, so over the course of four hours and on Sunday or on departure day similarly, I'm, I'm trying to see what, what, what this traffic, transportation issue really is, when it's not a part of a regular, it, it's not a, a, a main street operation where there's turnover, where there's retail space, where there's activity of, of cars coming and going.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to 14. We're getting close. Impact on energy. Slight increase in use of electricity, um, however, the impact is minimal. It relates to increased utilization, yeah. Will not require another substation.
No.
Okay.
Um, number 15, impact on noise, odor and light. Uh, it is possible that noise levels will increase compared to when hotel operations have been suspended, but it's not reasonably expected that an increase in noise levels, if any, will cause a significant adverse impact. Hotel and accessory buildings are fully enclosed and activities will take place inside the buildings and um, activities will be of limited duration and intensity. Regarding lights, uh, the property owner has stated that the exterior lighting will be the same as it has been presently. Um, and has agreed that lights will not shine into adjoining properties or create sky glow brighter than existing area conditions. So I think to Dan's point, this is, to Harm's point, this is a, uh, a commitment and it's not necessarily enforceable.
Yeah.
The, the noise, I've, I've lived it, you know, two years ago when the palace was occupied. And, you know, I'm at the other end of the street and the noise after, you know, 12 o'clock, unfortunately, our noise law on the weekend goes to 12 o'clock and not 10, like I did suggest.
11 o'clock.
No, 11 o'clock during the week, 12 o'clock on the weekends. So, um, at two o'clock in the morning, at one o'clock in the morning, I hear the noise from the hotel. It's, it's not contained within the building. So, you know, it happens, happens on Main Street, it's going to be no different than it happens here. Why would it be different? What, what assurance is there? What assurance is it, is there that it will be different? I don't hear any answer.
To concern.
Very, a big concern. I mean, people come up here for the peace and tranquility to be in the Catskills and, you know, that, that's a big concern, yeah.
Okay, um, so, any changes? Well, okay, so what we have here is just an intent, an intent.
Yeah.
Yeah, an intent. Um, 16, impact on human health. No impact.
No.
Uh, 17, impact, uh, consistency with community plans. Uh, let's see, what's, what do we have here? The comprehensive plan repeatedly refers to the need to undertake business retention and attraction efforts.
No.
Attract more tourists, protect the historical integrity of the historic district. So it's, it is consistent with the community plans to ma- maintain, um, and to foster economic development. Let me just put the, although the ZBA may disagree, in, uh, the local law is consistent with the village zoning regulations, let me just read this. When the village board adopted the zoning law, the board determined that the hotel was compatible with the residential zoning district because otherwise the board would have included an abandonment or amortization provision. So so there's language in the, in the strategic plan that supports the consistency with, uh, the, the village's, um, plan and aspirations. I don't think anyone disagrees with that.
No.
Um, consistency with the community character.
Consistency of the community character. I don't know, um. That's, I think that's questionable. I don't, I'm not, uh, with the consistency with the community character as it is now or the consistency with the community character as it might be.
Or, or how it once was.
Yeah, being a historic area. And everyone, I think. everyone, I think, everyone in the meeting today in the hearing said that they wanted the palace to be there to...
Open.
Open and be available to everyone. So I think character, it's a part of the character, and it's the last grand old lady left, you know?
Everyone is also a key word there.
Well, nobody wants, nobody was talking about taking the palace down, you know?
No.
No. Everybody would love to see it operating.
And available to everyone.
Yes, that was clear.
But, but will it be?
That's interesting, that your point of view that this property needs to be available to everyone. That's an interesting...
I think if it was available to everyone, it'd be really kind of neat. There would be, you know, it would, it would be, would entice more people to come up here and to spend more money in shops in the area. And it'd be cool to stay in a 100-year-old hotel.
I, no, my, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
My sense is that a business plan for a hotel creates an experience for its customers, and if it creates an experience that's comfortable for a certain segment of the population, that's appropriate, and it's not, I don't, I'm a little not so interested in saying everything has to be open to everyone. A Ford dealer isn't required to sell all of the Ford, Chevy, and Masters for their business. So I think business model is up to the owner.
Anyone could go in there and buy a Ford or a Chevy.
My client tells me that Mr. Halpern asked him specifically whether, for instance, if he's family wanted to make a reservation, would they be able to? And the answer is yes, absolutely yes.
There you go. Thank you, Ben. Thank you.
I just need to get to the site to make a reservation, let my friends know.
Also made the commitment to be, you know, to be open as long as, you know, more than the summer, as long as the tourist business is available.
Okay. So I think we've gone through it, we've raised some concerns on some issues, and I think what we have to kind of confirm with each other is, with respect to all 18 of these elements, do we have a significant impact? Do any one of these create a significant impact that would require a full environmental assessment to address these, a significant impact? So can I get board members' perspective on this? Do we see that there are of the issues that we've raised regarding sewer, parking, noise? Do we see that they, any one of these creates a significant impact that would send us in a direction to approve or disapprove of this SECRE?
Well, since I'm not an environmentalist, I would still like to see it being done by an outside source, by a consultant who would be, have a totally impartial view of this, as opposed to, you know, what we just did.
And I would like to... I would like to see a plan. A plan submitted to address those particular issues of parking and what kind of parking. I've seen the back that's going to become a parking lot, and I believe it is going to become a parking lot, but I've seen no schematic. I've not seen anything that says specifically pervious or that shows how that will happen to different levels, for one thing, and how that's going to take place. It's important and can help hugely to reassure the community. This is...
Yes, yes, Sam.
This is going to be, my view on this is, it's not, it's going to be a negative impact. It's going to be good. We had, this place has been running, it was running for a long, long time. I've seen pictures of, you know, 60, 70 years ago from the area, how populated it was. And look, the building is still standing, the structure right next to it is still standing. I really wish that we have more tourists coming through enjoying Fleishman's. And if the case was going to be that we will open this place for year-round, and everybody's coming. So, you know, a hotel, you get guests at 11 o'clock at night, they leave at 5 o'clock in the morning. So we're going to be seeing this with year-round hotel. You're looking forward to get more businesses. This is going to be only good things for the people of Fleishman's, for the rest is. That's, you know, that's all I got to say. People have forgotten about how busy it was back then. And look, everything's still family. Right now, everything is dead. Go ahead, Dan.
Dan.
So we just had a public hearing, and as a board that represents the residents of this village, not people who come in the summer, people coming, but people who live here. Majority of, majority of our residents vocalized, not in agreement with this, that, that, not in agreement that the property shouldn't open up, but they're all in agreement that go through the proper channels and not skirt the law, and go back to do what the ZBA had said. As a board, as a board who represents the village, we need to hear what the village residents are saying. Not, not, you know, not just people who are representing the property.
Okay. Stuart, did you have a comment to make on this?
Yeah, I'd like to just note that the comprehensive plan for the village of Fleishman's recognized that the village board said that the preservation of the village's historic character would promote pride and heritage of the community and result in direct economic benefits to Fleishman's by preserving its distinctive character. So according to the comprehensive plan, the Palace Hotel is consistent with the neighborhood and the historic district. And it's what our forefathers had put down, and they mentioned the Palace Hotel in the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Dan.
So no one is saying, and I'm not saying that the Palace Hotel should not open. All I'm saying is that to follow the law, it's like everyone else in the village is required to do. Not sit around the law and just follow it. That's all.
Right, but at this point, we're addressing significant impact or not significant impact. We're not talking about law or not law. We're talking about the SECRE that identifies patterns of use and impacts as a result of the changing of the law to allow the hotel to continue in its non-conforming use.
Winnifred?
Yes, Sam.
At this point, I'd like to move, I'd like to make a motion for 239 county review for our resolution on the adoption of law number one.
Oh, so you're calling the question? Is that what you're doing, so that you want to...
I want to make a motion, yes, for...
Okay, I think we have a motion on the floor, and we're in the discussion stage, so you want to call the question?
May I jump in here for a minute?
Yes.
Before the board votes to adopt the law, you need to vote to approve the resolution that you've been...
Exactly.
Yes, I thought that's what we were, I may have been mistaken. Sam, you want to...
We're doing, but...
Yeah.
Trustee's jumping ahead of himself or ahead of the board a little bit.
Yeah, I think we have to adopt or not adopt this.
Yes, the resolution that you've been reviewing so far.
That's right.
Yes.
So can I have a motion to call the question so that we move to vote on whether we are accepting this statement of environmental impacts?
I make the motion.
You have a second?
I second the motion.
Let me just, Sam, motion. And...
So, a question. So does that mean we vote yes, the SECRE stands as it is, and no further action is done on any of the outstanding issues?
That's correct.
That is correct.
I vote no.
Okay. Motion no. I vote yes.
Wait, wait, let me... So we've got Dan, Jennifer, Stuart, Sam, and Dan. Okay, so we're voting on accepting or rejecting the SECRE as it stands with... That's correct.
If we don't, if we have issues that need to be resolved with the SECRE, can the vote on changing the zoning law be postponed until those are addressed?
If we, if we vote no to the SECRE, my understanding is it's independent of the vote on the change in the law, but should we vote to change the law, we have to go back and amend and perfect the SECRE. I think they're independent, but I'm not, I'm not completely sure on that.
They're related, but...
I'm sorry?
They're related. The board, before the board can vote to adopt the law, you would have to vote to...
I can't hear, please.
To accept or to accept.
Because it, yeah, it would also, just for me, be helpful if if all of the neighbors were interviewed and their concerns brought up. Not necessarily that they would be accepted and addressed, but at least they would have been contacted and have been, and have had the opportunity to say how it would affect them personally. This isn't the change of the law necessarily, this is how the functioning of the hotel would affect adversely or well, you know, benefit their lives around that particular hotel. So that and the water sewer and the parking, those three are, to me, environmental impacts for the community, and I would just like to see them addressed. And then I would have no problem doing the vote. But right now...
Well, we're going to vote yes or no.
What you're doing, Winifred, with this SECRE form is you're voting whether it's a negative declaration with, without impact, or a positive declaration. And the concern that Dan and Jennifer are expressing is they're viewing things as positive declaration, and some of the others are not. But if you vote on this, that's what you're saying. It's either a negative declaration or a positive declaration.
Right. A negative declaration would mean there's no impact, no significant impact. And a positive declaration would say there is significant impact.
Correct, correct.
Okay. All right, so Dan voted no. Jennifer? Oh, wait, let's see who...
No, that, you know, as Hiram explained, being it has a positive impact on the environment.
Okay.
I mean, it has a negative impact on the environment, right.
It didn't. It's a little counterintuitive.
Yeah.
It is very counterintuitive.
Okay. Dan is no. Stuart?
Yeah, yes, I agree with this.
You, you, you agree with the SECRE as presented?
Yes, I agree with it as presented, that it has no negative, significant effect.
Right, and Sam?
Yeah, Winnifred.
Right. Jennifer?
I have to go with Dan on this.
Okay, no. Winifred says yes.
Where is our attorney? Why is our attorney not here?
Winnifred?
Dan, you had a comment?
No, I was wondering why our attorney was not present to this meeting, so...
He declined to participate, as it was a public event. And, but, but yes, he's not here. We've received comments and written opinions and oral opinions from him.
Yeah.
Okay, so at this point, we've accepted the negative declaration. No significant impact. So we move on to the motion regarding the zoning amendment, which I previously read. Do we need to read it again?
No.
No, no.
I think it's memorized.
So can I have a motion? We have, we have a motion to...
Before, I want to make sure, did my, the motion to for 239 county review, I just want to make sure that we get that motion in, please?
The 239?
Yes.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I apologize for interrupting. May I speak to my client for one, for 10 seconds?
Sure.
Before you proceed.
Winnifred, I got to go to the bathroom real quick.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Because we showed that the parking, we showed that the issues, we're past that. 32 is good. I apologize for that delay. I just wanted to note, I heard the trustee's resolution about, you know, or motion to adopt the law but conditioned upon receipt of the county planning report. But my client and I just discussed is, we have no objection if the board, you know, doesn't vote on that, on the law itself, until your next meeting, until after that report is received.
So you're saying that we don't, that your client... So you're, you're saying that we don't, that your client does not want us to vote on the, the law?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
So you're saying that the client does not have an expectation that we're gonna vote on this local law, zoning law amendment tonight?
That's up to the board. If the board is willing and ready and prepared to vote on that, then it's the board issue. He was just saying that they're not pressing it.
Yeah, I, I just wanna hear that from him.
Yes, Sam, back?
Right here. I'm right here, I'm back, baby.
Hello.
Thank you. It's been almost three hours.
Missed you.
Guess my only question is, and I'm sorry, trustee, I don't know your last name, but Jennifer?
Yes.
You know, voted no on the, on the seeker resolution.
Yes.
So there's concern about how you would vote on this law. So we wanted to see whether, you know, we've made these commitments in terms of the, in terms of the parking, in terms of the water and the sewer. Comprehensive plan says itself that there's more than enough capacity, water and sewer, for future growth. And the mayor has spoken to the operator and said there's such an impact. So having given you the commitments about the parking. And you've seen the plan, parking plan.
I, I haven't seen the plan. I have seen the area and where it's going to be and that, yes, it certainly hold.
Abe thinks he showed you this plan.
Why is this not presented to the planning board? Why is it presented now to the trustee?
The zoning amendment is a board of trustees matter.
Yes.
It's still unenforceable without going through the planning board or something like that. They can tell you anything they want. It's unenforceable.
Excuse me again.
Winifred, this is your meeting. Are you taking a vote?
Okay, so I'm kind of a little, if the, the client, if the palace owner is, is offering to, to provide information that Jennifer is requesting, that may or may not change her point of view. May or, may or may not, so. And so I think we could go ahead and vote on this tonight. We can take, take a vote on this. So I, I recognize the owner of the palace.
Yeah, hi. I'm trying to address this to all the board and particularly to Jennifer. We did went over the parking spaces. There is enough, actually more than twenty-six. I did show to everybody, but I'm sorry, Jennifer, maybe you'll let it, because I showed you the, the plan over there.
Yeah.
Uh, we have over thirty cars parking over here. I went this over with Mr. Halpern, went this over with trustee Cohen, with Sam. There is more than enough parking for in and out cars. The other issues, because we went over, whatever concerns you had, we went over. Now, there is, according to the mayor and all the, the trustees that went over, there is no adverse impact. There is no issues with the water and the sewer. There's enough capacity. So if there is any other issue, I would be happy to. Let me know all the issues. For Jennifer.
Thank you, Avram. My only other two were, and, and I'm happy to know the parking plan is pervious. The only other two were talking to the community around the palace, which I know is not required, but is a kind thing to do for the future particularly. And the other one was just that it's, it's a pervious.
Let me, let me address the issue about the, about the neighbors, okay? Most of the houses around, from the palace, we own.
Yeah.
There is a lot of people from around that I took them into the palace. I showed them. And they, well, it was just the opposite. They were waiting that people to come and occupy. So there is some business and some activity on the, on the block. I mean, everybody knows that we saved the historic district in Fleishman's. Years ago, the, those, the, most of the, of the block was a ban. Houses were for sale. People had for sale signs for six to seven, eight years. We came in, we wasted millions of dollars. The, the main reason, the most benefit that we have, whatever concerns is, is just for our own too. We want that every property to be enough parking, no issues with noise issues.
Yeah.
There, there is, there is no special activity with noise. Most of the properties, if there is, people need to comply, whatever, if like any other property. I mean, Mr. Halpern's dog barks in the middle of the night. There is nothing I could do. You know, we understand that.
Yeah.
Whatever concerns, if, with all respect, Jennifer, whatever question you had, we addressed and we went over everything in detail. And that was the reason that we went over, that's the reason why we went over with everybody. You know, I, Mr. Halpern's concerns, you know, about the specific group, there is nothing that I can help with it. I mean, we're not gonna change, not to be a system, you know, because he has an issue with us. I mean, each and everything, he has an issue. You know, he wants it to be open for other people. He asked me in person. I told him, no problem. They could come. The, the supermarket, the supermarket, we open for everybody. People, people in the village ask if we could be open all year round. And I said, yes, just give us the business, come in, and we're gonna be open all year round.
Hearing is over. I thought the public hearing was over.
It, it's.
I, I recognized him.
Okay. What, what I'm surprised is that I've been sitting with Mr. Halpern for three hours. He didn't know not even one zoning law, and he said, oh, he was told different. And he's sticking to the same story that it's not true in fact. We went through all, she opened the book right now, zoning says you're allowed to operate. Now, the, the mayor asked me on a specific thing a couple days ago. And I did address it the next day, next day. We are here to stay and to make Fleishman's a better and a good place. We have to work together. Whatever she asked me, I did the next day. So it's not a concern here. There is parking. When you look in the zoning book on one hundred thirty-one, it says, it's grandfather, it's exempt. You don't need parking spaces. We provided over here over thirty cars. There you go, a regular house, that it's a regular parking. And the board, they approved seven cars, eight cars. So, Mr. Halpern, what is your concern? We have, you saw the property.
My concern, my concern is, my concern is, this is all about the changing the zoning law to spot zoning. That's my concern.
Mr. Halpern, we spoke about, you know, it's not spot zoning. You know that. You know that. We went over this in detail for three hours, for three hours, and you said, yeah, you're right. I showed you what the, this, for the well-being from everybody, that this is not spot zoning. You know it's not spot zoning.
Okay, I think.
So, so Jennifer, going back, whatever your concerns, we have more interest to please the board, to make sure whatever is needed, we do. We invested in Fleishman's millions of dollars, where you can still see houses next to us. Amazing that it's for twenty years abandoned. Nobody's doing anything. Nobody's doing anything. Have a red carpet rolled out for us.
Okay, I understand.
I think.
Might I go back to what the ZBA said? Why is there an issue? What is anyone afraid of? Why can't they just follow what was said? Hiram mentioned many things about the plans.
And, and Mr. Halpern, I'm very surprised because I showed you the village zoning law that says a boarding and lodging is allowed only for five units. A boarding and lodging is allowed only if the owner lives there. Boarding and lodging is only allowed for fourteen days. I showed you everything. Now, if the zoning says that we are allowed to operate and this amendment is a clarification to operate, I don't understand what your question is. I would be happy to answer your question.
Okay, I think, I think we've got different perspectives here. I think we should move to a vote.
Thank you. We're voting on the, on the zoning law now, is that correct?
Yeah, voting on the, on the introductory local law, non-conforming hotels in the residential zoning district.
Can we, someone needs to make that motion, I believe.
You, you will make the motion?
No, I'm just saying somebody needs to make that motion before we vote.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Sam, the motion?
The motion to adopt, conditioned upon receipt of the county planning report. I believe that's what Sam had said initially.
Thank you.
I second the motion.
It's second. So do, do we have a technical issue about submitting to the county planning department? Or?
It's already been submitted. The board just hasn't received.
Okay. So all in favor of voting on the, we're not voting on the motion now, but we're voting on calling the question?
Okay.
So all those in favor of voting on this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, all right, now we're voting on the motion. Do we accept this amendment? And we'll read it. Being enacted by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Fleishman's, County of Delaware, State of New York as follows. Section one, section one hundred dash fifty-one titled, "Nonconforming Buildings and Uses" of chapter one hundred titled, "Zoning is amended by adding a new subsection H," to read as follows. Nonconforming hotels in residential zoning district. Any existing building in the residential zone district that was designed, constructed, and operated as a hotel shall be allowed to operate in a lawful, nonconforming hotel use, even if hotel operations were suspended for any period of time after the use became nonconforming. Law will take effect immediately upon filing with the Department of State. So voting in yes means we accept this change in the zoning law. Voting no means we're rejecting the change in the zoning law. Okay? All right, so Stuart, how do you vote?
In, in favor of this zoning law?
Yeah. Sam, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dan, how do you vote?
No.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Winifred? Yes. How interesting.
Never know, huh?
You never know.
Thank you very much for everybody.
Pathetic. Terrible.
Okay.
Okay, so there being no further. I, I have comments I wanna submit, but I don't need to bore everybody with them at the moment, as part of the record. If anyone has comments they want to submit for the record, I'd be happy to incorporate that. And can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone, for your patience and your deliberation.
Thank you, Winifred. Thank you, everybody.
Public hearing, thank you.
It's nice for dinner. Time for dinner. Oh. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Buenas noches.
Buenas noches, Stuart. Have fun.
Thank you.
Enjoy Mexico.
I will. How can you?
I can tell. I see you're happy.
This is the only place better than Fleishman's.